Well, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, May 3rd, 2021. We could all start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Before we start, I'd just like to make a quick announcement. I'd like to recognize one of our police officers in town, Mr., Police Officer Ed Myers, who assisted in motorists, who was kind of in a tough spot in a corner, and he was changing the tire on this motorists' vehicle to help her get back on the road and on to safer area. So I just wanted to recognize the officer as Facebook has been blowing up, you know, praising him. So just wanted to do a diligence to recognize him. So that being said, has everybody looked at the manifest? Or the, because I didn't see anything.
You didn't see it?
No, I mean I-
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I didn't either.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of May 3rd, 2021, and the payroll manifest of May 4th, 2021.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was the manifest. Payroll?
Both of them.
That was both. You did both of them, okay. All right, so budget is not in session. Planning board?
What about minutes?
Oh, minutes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Tony. Minutes. Everybody had an opportunity to look that over?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 5th, and public minutes of April 5th, and the public and non-public minutes of April 7th.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Now we'll do the boards. Planning board?
Planning board, yep. Meeting was 4:28, had one, two, two cases. Also, they're working on an application for a conditional use permit. Got a site walk coming up Wednesday over to where they had the water crossing. And asked to, or not yet, somewhere. Asked Chris about, have we heard anything from the state or the DOT about the intersection at 152 and Route 4?
It is in the most recently finished, I don't think it's called the 10-year plan. There's a document every couple of years that lists the regional priorities, and that project is still there. We haven't heard anything specific about when, but it is still alive, still rated, still in the next batch of projects. Frankly, it's been languishing in that same spot for quite a while, but it is, I think it's far along as the local and regional process can push it. And that is, the last I saw on it, it was not a big reconstruction. It was more a signaling change.
Yeah, that's what it took. Signage or even someday a traffic light or something.
Yeah, it was some new-fangled way of signaling an intersection. They purchased a couple tracts of land near that intersection 10 years ago? 12 years ago? I don't know, before my time. They still own those pieces, but I don't believe they intend to use them. They've changed, you know, five years ago, they gave up on that plan and switched to this newer concept.
Thank you. It's all.
Okay. CIP is not meeting. 300th?
300th hasn't had a meeting, but officially have letters out to see if people want to sponsor or have an ad.
Oh, nice. Okay. And Marston?
Well, I think we're going to talk about that a lot tonight.
All right, so you want to wait till?
Yeah.
Awesome, all right. Town Administrator Report.
All right. By way of public notification anyway, I know you've seen it in writing, we have issued our first special event license under that policy that you all approved a couple months ago for the cruise nights at Lyers on Tuesdays over the course of the summer. That one was small enough for staff approval. From a process point of view, I think went okay for us and for the applicant. I think it was relatively painless. We have received a special event license application for the water cross, same thing that the planning board's working on. I told the applicants that we would start the staff portion of that while the planning board process was going on, just so that if they got through planning and zoning in time for one of their scheduled events, we wouldn't be a limiting factor for them. But I also said that you were probably unlikely to approve any license if that process was still going on, because that was what your message was last year. If that message is still accurate, I will continue with that. Safety chiefs and I are meeting on Wednesday to go through that and get recommendations ready for them for when the time comes. So maybe you'll see it, maybe you won't, but we're working behind the scenes on it. Kudos to Officer Kyle Kachanowicz, who just finished the State Police Academy two weeks ago. He's in field training right now. When he finishes field training, he'll be completely certified, full-time certified. And as he comes back from Concord, Brian DeFranzo, another one of our younger officers, is off to the academy. He starts, might have been today, actually, was his first day. The academy is not a live-in experience anymore. That's a thing of the past. It's a go there for the, Kyle went through it pretty much exclusively remotely, with some of the field work done in person, the hands-on technical training in person. Brian's going to be just going for the day. And I think that's the new permanent model for the police academy, is go for the day, come home, stay at night. Unless you are coming down from Berlins or Colebrook or something, and it doesn't make sense. That's my understanding of where they're headed. You also have, in your mountain of stuff to sign tonight, is a approval of an appointment of a part-time officer. Chief Woodman fell into an opportunity to hire a part-time certified officer, which is a big help for us with one in the academy. And our other part-time, our part-time officer that's been with us for a long time is stepping out of that role, so having a part-timer at least to get through the summer will help. Also related to that, the state park has woken up again and asked for some detailed help on weekends. We took last year off from that, obviously, because the park was kind of closed. The front gate was closed, the back gate wasn't. So they are at the park telling us that with their reservation system in place, that the crowds are going to be dramatically smaller.
Are they limiting?
Yes, they are limiting pre-reservations for day and camping activities. So their request of us for detailed support is going to be smaller this year, but it's flexible if we need to stretch it out. In your pile there is, we actually need you to have a vote to authorize Chief Woodman to sign those contracts. We go through that every year with the governor and council. And lastly, in general information, we say goodbye to Larry Ellison at the recycling center this week. Larry's been with us 10 years or so and is going to retire, I guess. Finally, really retire. He's been doing this part-time with us for about 10 years. Thursday will be his last day. So thank you, Larry. And that's all I got for you.
Okay. Action items from last meeting. Marston's name, update recycling fees. Did we want to touch base on that again, or do you want to wait till we get right into Marston?
Let's wait.
All right, okay. Assessing. We've got a number of credits here, huh? Has anybody had an opportunity to look those over?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody feel comfortable? You want to make a motion?
Yep, I'll make, all right, I'll start with the timber permits. Make a motion to approve the intent to cut or excavate permits for map 40 lot 14, map 40 lot 1, map 10 lot 12, map 69 lot 10, map 39 lot 10, and map 8 lot 7-1.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Veterans credits?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the select board approve the veterans' credit exemption for map 52 lot 6-3.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anybody want to have discussion on the abatement? Well, it's non-public, never mind.
Yes, for non-public.
Disregard.
But I would like a motion that the-
It doesn't have to be a non-public. If you don't want to discuss anything, you just want to make a vote and be, you know, up or down. You can do that in public session. There are just factors in there that, if you wanted to talk about it, you should do it in non-public.
I'd like to talk about it in non-public.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right, and I'll make a motion that the select board approve the elderly or disabled exemption for map 71 lot 123.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And there's one left. It's marked fair. Chris?
Fair point.
Fair point.
Oh, that's the NETO one that we?
That is a-
An NETO?
That's an approval of a small dollar amount of abatement on a-
It was.
Calculator error.
It was the same.
Yes, that's what it is.
An NETO LLC abatement. Northern New England telephone operators, telephone telegraph, okay. All right, then I'll make a motion that the select board approve the abatement application for-
Fair.
Fair. Fair point.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
General business. Sale of town property.
Want to do Marston first?
Yeah, let's do Marston first.
All right, hello.
Hi.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good.
I think I know everyone here. John, hello. So we just-
My name's Donna.
Don, Dunnies?
Yes, that's it.
Anyway, Courtney and I just wanted to give you a little update on what's going on with the Marston property. And before we get into that, she doesn't know I'm going to say this right now, but I got to tell you, you've got one fantastic rec director here. All of the work that Courtney has done behind the scenes, the extra out, you wouldn't believe the times of day that I get emails from her, and she's really gone above and beyond whatever kind of role a rec director has as far as fundraising, graphic design work, everything else. So her and the whole rec department are really outstanding, and they're doing a fantastic job keeping this project rolling from the town side of it, so.
I second that, full-heartedly.
I serve that.
Thank you, Courtney, for doing all that.
It's fun.
Well, it's fun, yeah. It is fun. So we kind of took, not really took last year off, but nothing really happened out there as far as with the construction. We were really just doing a rain dance, trying to get the grass to grow, and it didn't work so well, like so many other things didn't work so well last year. So we ended up having to overseed everything in the fall, which ate into a little bit of our budget. We currently have about $9,000 left from that initial $300,000. And if I'm, you know, repeating myself too much from any of the memos that went around, just hit the fast-forward button on me. But between that $9,000 and then probably $23,000 to $24,000 in additional donations that the fundraising committee has gotten between Joe Porter, the NYA, Tim Dobrio, John, Karen Quinn, John Tabasco, you know, and several other volunteers. So we're up to probably $30,000 something thousand right now, between our initial nine and that other 23. So that's about $32,000. We're hoping to keep that trend going. The decision was made amongst the, kind of the steering committee, was to channel our efforts into irrigation system and preserve the grass that we hopefully can get to grow again this spring. You know, we lost, you know, I mean, we basically, you know, it grew and died last year without any kind of water on it. So instead of putting up the backstops, we're going to try and get the irrigation and the electricity and the well and pump in. So that's kind of our initial focus of that $32,000-ish right now. The well and pump is going to come in at roughly $28,000, and then the irrigation system, depending on the price of materials, is probably going to be another eight, maybe 10-ish on that. And just something in general, a big problem that we're running into right now is because of the pandemic, the prices of raw materials, and you've probably seen this, you know, if you go to Lowe's or anywhere else. I just heard from Carl Eden, who's helping us out with the electricity, that the price of PVC and electrical wire has skyrocketed, and what we thought we were going to get donated kind of got backed off on that. So we're going to have to pay, we thought we were going to get all the electricity stuff donated. We're definitely going to get the labor donated, some of the materials. So it looks like we're probably going to have about a $2,000 cost in electricity materials. And that's not in that update, because that information just came down about half an hour ago. And again, that's due to the skyrocketing cost of PVC and wire. The cost of the backstops is almost doubled from our initial estimate four years ago, because the price of steel has just gone up. A lot of these companies, they're not giving out quotes that are valid for more than 10 days right now. All three of the backstop quotes that we have are valid for 10 days at a time, because the price of the raw materials has changed so much. So it's very much a dynamic environment on what we're kind of dealing with right now. So we're focusing on the well, the irrigation, and then we'll work on our fundraising to get the backstops and stuff going. Do you want to talk about the trails portion of it?
So alongside all of that, we have kind of come up with some short-term goals to get use of that property for this fall. Being that things are kind of delayed because of what Matt just explained, it's pushed some of our, we were hoping to get baseball on there this year, but without fences and without that kind of stuff, we can't play safely. So with that being said, though, we've been working with the trails committee, and it's looking like we have a trail flagged out, a hiking trail flagged out right now, and we are hoping to have that of use by this fall. And then also, if we can secure grass and kind of get that grass moving, our hopes are to have Earth Fest at Marston this year, along with, we have a brand-new flag football league that we're starting at the rec department. That is five towns, I believe.
Yes.
And over 200 kids in different town fields hosting games. But that'll bring non-residents in, that'll bring residents out, and we're really pushing the construction of the trail use. But with that being said, we're here tonight, too, to talk about some of the things we knew. We knew that we were going to have to do some cleanups. The rec successfully had our first trail cleanup of this trail about a couple weeks ago, and we kind of got a feel for how many people. We only had 10 volunteers, but we got that trail cleaned up in a matter of an hour, which was huge. Looks great back there. We're really excited about it. So we're hoping that momentum kind of continues. And we have two trail cleanups coming up on May 20th, what was it, May 22nd? And June 12th. So we're looking for volunteers for that as well. But with that, it used to be an old dumping site, and I think that's the history of the property. So there is trash there. So we are coming to you guys, because we are in need of a dumpster, a few dumpsters probably, and porta-potties for our trail cleanup day. And that's something that we didn't budget for, because we didn't really know how much we were working with. But the good news, too, with that is that Celia, the trails committee chair, has kind of worked the trail around, so that some of those larger dumping sites are not visible. So there is, we can still use the trail in the near future without it being totally cleaned up in a safe way. So that's what we're hoping for. So, yeah.
Yeah, there is a fair amount of trash out there. And a lot of it, like she said, you know, we routed Celia, who's been great with the trails department, you know, going around the bigger areas until that gets done. But it's still probably one to two 30-yard dumpsters worth of just small trash out there, whether it's cinder blocks. Yeah, it was quite a lot of material that was left down, left out there by the previous owner. But, yeah, again, we'll be able to safely work around the bigger sites, but even those smaller areas are going to require some of that. So again, if we can get the talent to bring out some dumpsters for us, then that'll really make that process go a lot easier, as opposed to putting it in trash bags and hauling it over to the town, where the town pays for it anyway, pretty much.
How much scrap metal would you say is out there? I saw the picture of like half a car. How much more of that stuff is out there?
There's a good amount.
Yeah, there's a good amount. There's that half a car. There's one or two other, you know, similar size to what you saw, probably piles of some scrap metal and stuff like that. It's hard for me to gauge in terms of weight or volume, what you're looking for, without being an expert on it. The tougher part about getting into those areas is they're pretty well, they're back pretty far within the woods. And it's going to require like some cutting of trees and that kind of stuff. It's a more in-depth area to clean up those big areas, which is why we tried to route the trail around it.
Yeah, because what I'm thinking of is, you know, if we can get a large trailer, or maybe even one of the smaller dump trucks from the highway department, fill it with scrap metal and take it over to the metal yard by the Irving. And, you know, it'll take somebody a couple of hours to have to sit through their process, but even if they pay for that metal at the scrap, the pig iron price, it's 50 to 75 cents a pound, it's still going to be a few hundred bucks that you can put back in the coffers.
Covers the cost of a dumpster.
We'll trade it for the dumpster.
Yeah, so it's just a thought, you know.
Yeah, it's definitely a great idea, and, you know, we talked about some of that also. But the hardest part for that phase of it is going to be the physical access to that, to get the flatbed trailer, the truck, without, you know, a lot of chainsaw work and other, you know, work to get back to those spaces.
I mean, if we know anybody with some, a couple of four-wheelers and some, really?
I know a guy who just spent way too much money on a new four-wheeler. His last name is Danus.
Well, there you go. There you go, one driver. It wouldn't be a big deal to drag it out. Hell, even if you got 10 or 12 volunteers and one really big, long rope, just drag it out of the woods, and then get the trailer just to the wood line. You know, there's ways, but I'm thinking that scrap metal has value, and there's no reason not to roll that over into the project, rather than just putting it in a dumpster and sending it away.
If we can do that, that'd be great. I think the short-term concern is getting the trail open and usable for everyone, which is why we kind of routed it around those big areas. And then, so that the dumpsters that we're asking for now are going to address that immediate need of the small amounts of trash that are just kind of everywhere back in amongst the woods there.
I like that, longer term.
And then we attack that problem maybe a little bit later in the summer or something like that, once we get the bulk of it open and usable, so that the town can actually get some sort of return on this.
Yeah, no, that's sensible.
And the trail itself that Celia laid out is, like, it runs along the river, it goes up on a bluff, like, it's going to be a fantastic site. Like, the way she laid it out and the spots she picked up are really, really a nice sight. So it's going to be a huge benefit to town once we can get it going.
So remind me, the cost for a couple of dumpsters? What is it that you're looking for now?
You know, I don't know if the town has like a contract cost or anything, but, I mean, it's probably a couple thousand dollars to bring in, you know, at least two, three yards.
So not a lot?
Not a lot, no. Yeah, it depends on your scale, but, but, yeah.
And pay it by weight, too, you know, you pay to get it brought in and rent the thing and take it out, and then you pay by the pound of disposal, whatever's in it.
Got it, okay, okay.
If you think two or three, if you think two 30-yard dumpsters will get you, you know, to the point where you want to open the trail, and that's a guess, and we know-
Right, yeah, that's just a guess on it, but, yeah, I think that's reasonable based on-
That's a $5,000 proposition with a couple of, you wanted some porta-potty for the volunteers, because-
Because there's going to be a couple different weekends out there.
So one porta-potty is rated for like 200 or so people?
One will be plenty.
One's good, yeah, that's good.
And they'll be out in the woods.
But you really think there's 60 cubic yards of trash out there?
Depending on how much we want to attack those, I mean, we can fill it easily if we then start to attack some of those larger piles also with manpower, as opposed to, because the larger piles, like you said, there was a truck bed, but there's all sorts of small stuff around that. I don't think we will come up short at all on filling those, based on the small requirements. And then, you know, what if we have space and we have manpower? Then we start to attack some of those bigger problems just with raw labor, with labor.
Well, and with 10 people, we were able to clean this in an hour. I think when you have, if we had even 20 people who volunteered, you'd see a huge dent taken out of that. And I just wanted to add, too, it's definitely heavier towards the riverside. As you get into the other side of the property, it does lessen, but there are some pretty big mounds, and that's where some of the larger car parts are. But if we had the bodies out there, we were talking, we might as well try to get as much out as we can, just so that it's safe. And, you know, people are going to go off-trail. We can't stop them from doing that. We hope they wouldn't go off-trail, but, you know, the hopes are that if they were-
We can put some signage out there.
We can put signage out, exactly, but, yeah.
Have you put out the call to the Co-Brown kids? Because they all need community service hours.
Yeah, they're one of our first stops.
I've got two at Co-Brown myself, so.
As well.
Yeah, me, too. I got my son actually lined up to do some trash pickup at the dump, and him and I are going to repaint the gate.
Nice.
Because it's needing a paint job. So we'll be there for cleanup day.
Yeah, we'll be there. So Chris, I mean, it doesn't seem to me like it's an awful lot of money. Is this something we can find out of the budget?
Yeah, by year-end, we can find $5,000 bucks. Yeah, we don't know where, but yes, we always, we always finish with plenty of breathing room like that. And knowing, you know, five months into the year that we're going to need it, yes, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. So I'd like to see the board give them the go-ahead to move forward with this.
Any comments? So you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to the select board to approve the rental of two 30-yard dumpsters and a porta-potty for the Marston Park cleanup. We calling it the Marston Park?
Well, that's the next topic. I'll second that motion.
It's pretty clear what I'm talking about.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? unanimous?
The guys have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just so, I mean, just so we're clear, like, this is kind of the beginning of the next phase of it. I know we haven't put the backstops up yet, but, you know, when we originally came to the town and came before you guys, three years ago now, we asked for that initial laydown of money to get the fields built, the major construction done, and the backstops up. We kind of traded the backstops for the irrigation system right now, and that's where our fundraising efforts are going. So, you know, as we are sitting here hat in hand trying to do this, this is kind of the beginning of the next phase of, you know, trying to get the hiking trails and build out some of those other pieces of it. So in case word comes back that, oh, my God, they want more money. Well, you know what? We're starting another phase of it.
Yeah, let me just reiterate what Matt kind of said at the beginning. There's a lot of activity going on for fundraising. Joe Porter is working sponsorships, like, she's a shark. She's doing an excellent job.
She secured $20,000 in sponsorships for us already.
Karen Quinn is going after some of the bigger companies, like the Dick's Sporting Goods and those. There's a lot of guerrilla activity going on. Tim and John from NYA are doing an amazing job. I don't know what the latest number is, but they have, as kids are signing up for sports, they're giving an optional checkbook for people to give donations to Marston. That's working out extremely well. So, I mean, it's not visible to a lot of people, but we're meeting, what, like, every three weeks? And there's like eight of us on the calls, and it's just a smooth, people divvying up, I can do this, I can do that, I can do this. So there's a lot of great activity going on.
Don't forget the I D E W, the graciously voluntary, all the electrical work for as far as laying the, you know, doing the electrical workforce, if we can get the materials out there for them.
Well, I want to get the apprentice director over there with you and Carl or whatever. And, I mean, he's, you know, we've got at least 60 guys over there every weekend. I mean, we can knock it out and-
Yeah, we're just waiting on the design to come back from the co-op, the utility company, and then we'll be ready to move forward with that. But again, they're providing, you know, as much electrical labor as we need.
And two scoreboards.
And two scoreboards.
Free field, yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, I don't think you guys even know this, but I got an email from- Yep, that's awesome. Yeah, I don't think you guys even know this, but I got an email from um, an individual in town who just said, hey, tell me about sponsorship opportunities. I wanna know what's available and whether it's, you know, cash or donation in kind or whatever. So Joe is, is following up on that. So there's a lot going on there. Did you guys have anything else?
Uh, I wanted to quickly, on the rec side of things, we are going for Earth Fest this year too, and
Hey Courtney, I'm sorry, can we just finish up on Marston?
Yeah, this, this relates to Marston.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is gonna happen.
I apologize.
Courtney, where is Earth Fest gonna happen this year?
We want it to happen at Marston, so we're kind of taking this year to kinda center back into Nottingham, bring back something really fun for the community, keep it a little bit smaller, keep it a little bit more local. Um, with that being said, this is new for you guys and the sponsorship kinda committee. I'd like to offer the silent auction booth to the sponsorship commis- committee to basically help us run that, but all the proceeds from that, we wanna put towards the Marston project. We also wanna take our five K this year, and we wanna help the project as well. Um, I've been working a little bit behind the scenes with a super excited volunteer, so with this property, it's, it's gonna have to be done in phases. And with the fields being done and the trail hopefully getting done, that leaves the other whole half of the property to work with. Um, so we're kind of taking baby steps, but looking into what it takes to put a disc golf course on there, and that's something that can be moved and changed, and it's a super growing opportunity and would be a really cool opportunity for this town. Um, so that's kinda behind the scenes stuff, that's, who knows where that will end up. I'm hoping that it would be something great for that property a couple of years out, but um, kinda starting the design phases for that, for the volunteer, so. We're excited, we're excited about Marston.
Yeah, and you're doing a lot, you're doing a really good job thinking about everybody in town, what we can do to make it attractive to everybody.
I could pile on one more thing that we're learning how to do or transitioning through is uh, we've had a core of volunteers, Matt in particular, for five, six years?
Ten, twenty. Matt and I met when we were sixteen.
Anyway, uh, the, the days of, of having a, a volunteer manager of that whole process are, are numbered. Uh, we, we can't lean on volunteers, cuz we've known this all along. We've uh, anticipated dealing with Marston as a town asset, just like every other town asset. Um, we are also getting our heads around that. We've got mowing in the budget this year. You know, we add irrigation on. We didn't think about the electric cost for that, cuz we just didn't, we, we missed that, so we'll figure that out, but we're, you're gonna see things coming up that, as we learn what it's like to have a brand-new asset like this to maintain, we're gonna figure that out. Courtney's on top of it, but, you know, that's, it's a new asset to, to manage, um, and so we, we knew that was coming, but it's, it's underway. As we, as we shift the, the oversight of it away from folks like Matt to Courtney, uh, we're, we're gonna stumble on something and we're gonna learn how to do things well, but that's underway too.
But you're not leaving anytime soon?
No.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not trying to push you out, I'm just
My wife throws me out and I have to move, no.
You can come with me.
Okay.
My daughter's leaving and there's a new ATV, so.
Uh, well, one other thing, I forgot to plug Sean from the uh, highway, uh, what's the uh, public works department now. Uh, back when we were doing the initial construction, he was Johnny on the spot with dump trucks hauling in extra fill from the poor farm, or ledge farm road project. Um, he's gonna help us out with the utility construction as far as excavation, stuff like that, so. Uh, everything we've asked of him has been like, yes, what do you need, what can I help? So, another plug for, you know, the other people in town here who are working hard.
Community coming together.
Yep.
So let's talk about the name, cuz I know that's important. That was on your list.
Yeah, it was on my list, and, and the only reason uh, that, or one of the reasons I, I wanted to talk about changing the name is that there is some negative uh, um, image or something that's attached to it, based on what you guys have already talked about. The stuff that's in the woods and all that other stuff. I, I, I get it that it's not that name that, that started it all, it was the one that came after that, but the other one is that, you know, Deerfield has a Marston uh, project as well. So I kinda wanna differentiate ourselves from another town, and, you know, um, fellow board member here, Tony, uh, had made the suggestion of a, of a, a Minuteman field. And I think that would tie nicely into what Nottingham is all about, our history, our, our heritage and, and all that, and I certainly understand everybody's uh, thoughts and comments in regards to it, and, and I'm just one member of the board. I'm gonna leave it up to the will of the board, uh, um, if they wanna proceed with it, keep, keep the name the way it is, or change it to Minuteman, but I'd like to see it changed to Minuteman.
I think we had some communication from the Historical Society about the word Minuteman itself and how it didn't really fit the context.
They, they were militia, they weren't Minutemen.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, I mean, I just, I just came up with the word Minuteman, cuz that's the, that's the imagery I see when I look at the town seal, but um,
Not to bring in another town here, but, you know, I, I work down in, in Massachusetts, and the town of Bifford, I think, has a Minuteman Park. And they have statues and all that down there. Um, so I don't really think that that would be an issue. But again, it's, it's the will of the board. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll support whatever.
So I wanna throw out a different, I, I might not be popular for throwing this out, but um, to your point, Nottingham does have a rich history. And I don't think our history is all about the generals. I, I, I think there's more to Nottingham than generals who went to war. And um, I think as Rhoda pointed out, from the um, Historical Society perspective, that the Marston property in its, in itself has had a rich history. And beyond what Don Lee did to the po- to the property, and so I think that we could work with the Historical Society to emphasize and educate people on the history of that property based on what it was, right? And I, I mean, trust me, I support our military two hundred percent. I'm not making a statement on that. I'm
Not taking it.
All I'm saying is just like, I, I'd like to think a little bit broader than, you know, our history is a little bit broader than the four generals.
And, you know, Marston is one of the, what's the word, the, the root families of Nottingham, the founding families. So there is more to that name than the contemporary history of trash and rotting vehicles, so.
And to, and to me, it's, I mean, all right, full confession, I've spent my life in marketing. It's a, it's a marketing and education experience, so, I mean, that's, that's how I feel about it.
I mean, there's gonna be all different areas, regular softball field, baseball field, trails, little, by the picnic area or whatever, that's still gonna happen, I mean, we could name everything something different. I mean, I, my personal belief is, is Wayne Travis, who is a resident, you know, his whole life of Nottingham, has done more for this baseball program than anybody in town. I mean, he's still the treasurer, I think, of the Naperville Little League, I mean. Like, see something named after him, whether it's a, a dugout or a base or something, I mean, people, you know, but most of the fields around aren't named after the community, they're named after people that had something to do with it. Kemmit Field and Raymond, the guy was, you know, lifelong same thing, put all of his time and effort into coaching, whatever, you know, they, they need some credit too, I think, but, time for whatever. As long as the kid's got a decent field to play in, I mean, I know
Exactly.
this is a beautiful one out here, but, you know, it's, it's outgrown itself.
I, I kinda envisioned, um, you know, um, you know, naming the field something other than Marston, but when the day comes, or should we decide to put a building on it, you know, naming that the Marston, you know, Pavilion or, or whatever, and then having a section carved out within the building to talk about the rich history uh, of the Marston uh, property and so on. Um, but again, I mean, I'm just throwing out some ideas.
Yeah, no, it, it's a good discussion. I mean, part of me is also like, okay, people are used to calling it Marston now. I, I did not know there was a Marston Field in Deerfield.
Neither.
What's
There's a project, I remember reading something over the weekend, I'll dig it up and I'll forward it to everybody, so.
I'll have a big
Marston's main
We'll put up our sign first.
So, uh, it, it's either already in place, or I don't, I don't remember the extent of the conversation or the article there, but I'll, I'll dig it up and I'll, I'll send it out. But that kinda struck me, it's like, okay, Deerfield's got Marston, and now we have Marston, uh, but we've already, already had Marston, but
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in which case you could say like Nottingham Marston Fields or something like that, but um, the field at the school is Knights Field, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think the decision lies with this board. The, the decision does not lie with the fundraising committee, nor do they want anything to do with it. I would name it Kakouchas Field, but nobody would be able to spell it, so we're not gonna do that.
Okay, not to put you on the spot, what's the significance of the name? The history of the name?
Marston?
No, the name you just brought up, that no one can spell.
Kakouchas?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know.
Oh, you just
It's his last name.
All right, just for the record, Ellen.
You know, Deerfields is called Marston Fields, or, you know, Marston Park, or whatever. We could call ours Marston Commons. And then the individual ball fields could be named after each, after a general or somebody who contributed.
Or Marston Farm, maybe.
Marston Farm?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I like that.
Isn't that usually reserved for like residential homes and stuff, where they, they build on a, on a farm or something land, they call it?
I like Marston Field.
Farm?
Oh, farm, Marston Farm, Marston Farm Fields. But I do like what you just said too, and different parts of it, because one of the conversations we had at one point was about naming different fields after different generals.
Yeah.
But you could name different fields after different individuals in town.
Yeah, I mean, and not, you, each dugout could be named after something, whatever, you know, anything.
I like that a lot.
Lag pole, you know.
Even the trails, right? Each trail could have a name for somebody who contributed significantly, or a historical person, whatever, I mean, every object in the property can be named after somebody who is significant to this town in one way or another.
We could put a sign out there by the, all the old cars and stuff, Nottingham's First Auto Dealer. People will come see.
Tors of traction.
So Tony, that fits with exactly the point that I was trying to make, is that our history is bigger than just the four generals.
Right.
You know, I mean, think about the batch elders, how long they've been here, right? And so, I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, put it out to the contest, have them, have the kids come up with a name, or whatever.
Well, we, we, we tried that. I mean, we did do a couple of polls and stuff on Facebook. We didn't get a whole lot of response. I do think as we're getting to the point where we're trying to make the trails, you know, ready for folks, that we need to kinda pick a name.
Trailie McTrail Phase was probably the big winner
Yes.
at the school.
All this is another way of saying that everything is still for sale, in the way of names.
Yeah, well, I mean, well
I mean, if we're gonna, it'd be more of a dedication than a salable asset.
All that you wish.
Yeah.
Tony, it's a salable asset. Um, but, I mean, I think we do have to kinda like decide. I think the, I think the chances of us at this point getting somebody to sponsor the entire field and take on the field name is not
Probably not realistic.
Probably not realistic.
But it would be nice to go to the sponsors with a final name.
Yeah.
Correct.
Instead of just continuing to kick it down the road.
Yep.
I, I like the idea Nottingham Commons because it's a, it's an all-encompassing term, cuz it's not just a farm, it's not just a park, it's not just a trail, it's not just a field, it's a common area for the town, you know, and then
Isn't the land at the top of the hill Nottingham Square?
Nottingham Square.
Square, but was, was it not?
I think it was the original, it was the original town common.
Oh, it was? I don't know, but, I mean, I didn't mean to say Nottingham Commons, Marston Commons.
Oh, Marston Commons, okay.
Cuz it is a, it's the Marston property and it's a common place for everybody. There's a little something for everyone there, so.
Marston Farm Commons? I do like Marston Farm. That's got a nice
That, that, that does highlight the agricultural history of the town, so.
Yeah, yeah. Marston Farm Fields, Marston Farms.
More than fields, though.
Excellent point. Marston Farm Recreational Area.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. All right, so
Go ahead, John.
No, nothing, all right.
Do you have an opinion on this?
I was just gonna say the Marstons aren't the ones that really screwed up the yard, so it's not their fault.
No, no, and I, and I thought I made that point earlier. It's just unfortunately because of the negativity surrounding that property, kinda, you know, I thought diminishes the name at this point, which, you know.
But that, that negativity is contemporary, right? Recent years, when you think of
Right.
you know, how many, what, at least two centuries, there's been a farm there, right? That the historical context is a lot wider and a lot deeper than just the, the recent history of it, so. And I think in time that, you know
It'll fade.
People's angst would fade with, you know
With a couple more dumpsters.
Yeah, yes.
Nice, thank you.
So I'm sensing that the general, the, the, the majority of the board here wants to keep it, the Marston something within the name. Now, whether it's farm recreation or commons or what, that kinda remains to be seen.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we officially move forward with the name Marston Farm Recreation Area.
I'll second that, I like it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay.
What's your name?
Marston Farm Recreation, so let it be.
Something to be changed in ten years if somebody with a donation comes along.
But I, but I don't wanna forget, well, I like, I really like Tyler's idea, so I don't wanna forget about that.
The fields, the trails, the, you know, the snack shack, when it, when that happens, every little object on the property can be named after a significant
General question. Are you limiting the peoples and residents of bringing their dogs to that property?
That is a town issue, but no.
We haven't talked about that.
I brought mine out there.
We did put a sign out there to remind people to pick up after their dogs and to use leashes, um, just as a precaution.
Just asking in general.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. We have people that bring their dogs here, and I haven't had a complaint at this point about people not picking up or, or
Hey, I own two dogs, so I'm not like against it or anything, I'm just asking in general, so.
I don't see why not.
From a construction standpoint, we're just trying to keep people off of where the actual athletic field proper is gonna be, just to get that grass going, but if you go out there and you consider, like, when you pull into the parking lot, there's an area immediately on your right or to the west side and then straight ahead, that area's being mowed also, it's relatively flat, like, I think there's a there's another group that's gonna go out there, like, that area is, is a great use area, and we're encouraging people to use that area also right now. So there is plenty of space out there for people to use, whether it's gonna be like a, you know, even a soccer practice or something else, but, or to go run your dog around. Dogs.
Okay.
You're gonna have to get used to calling it the Marston Farm Recreational Area. Lot more syllables, but we'll work on that.
Definitely a mouthful.
The shorthand, Marston.
Marston, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Ben, we had one more last-minute rec subject. Do you wanna loop back to that, or do you wanna do that?
No, we can, you know, I'm sure that
Is everybody know Bridget? You all met Bridget, Bridget Hart? Bridget knows everybody?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry for the last-minute ad, but we wanted to make sure we got it in today. Um, we wanted to talk to you guys and, and, and we're seeking approval. Um, we are seeking approval for the addition of a third Parks and Recreation employee. Um, we would like that person to start immediately, whenever they can. Um, as we came out of this, or as we're kind of coming out of this pandemic, we plan to add, it's kinda given us this opportunity to look at the structure that we've had in place, kinda look at where our programs are going. We've had a thousand and one more ideas we would like to do.
Great ideas.
And so we thought, you know, we're gonna ask our unicorn question. Um, so, with that being said, we've, we've had the opportunity to kind of connect with some of our, our, our other target markets. We do youth really well. Um, we have our summer camp with the addition of aftercare. We haven't had a full year yet, but this year is looking to be, is looking to be packed. The school's excited to have us back, we're excited to be back. Um, school, we, or, we're, we're going over to the school this summer to, we have a projected, hopefully, over a hundred kids this summer. Um, so going from thirty to a hundred is gonna be crazy, but that was our two thousand and nineteen record, so we're hoping to top that if we can in a safe way and, and that kinda stuff. So we are, and we've added flag football. So last year during the pandemic, we've, um, we had our own internal flag football program, which was awesome.
Yes.
We had an amazing time, we had We had an amazing town, we had over sixty kids just locally, we opened it up to the SAU, um, so Strafford, uh, Nottingham and Northwood. And through that, we used to all travel to Exeter, um, to do their NFL flag football, which was such a haul, especially when soccer's going on, and we have so much stuff going on in the fall here, we were like, let's host it, let's see what that entails. And we have five towns, Deerfield, Strafford, Northwood, us, Barrington, that have all come out interested, and we're looking at over two hundred, three teams per town. Um, we're hoping Marston has grass, so we'll keep Marston. Um, and we use the school fields for that as well. So, projected to have a huge, um, you know, excitement there. Um, so, and alongside that, we've realized that, you know, our legacy leaders, which is our fifty-five plus group, they, these are people that through the pandemic have also kind of expressed that they want programs and things to do. Um, so we've been looking at different ways to, to kind of do some outreach. But the problem with that, with that, is that with aftercare going on, summer camp going on, and this new flag football, those are three beasts of programs, it, it leaves very little room for the two full-time people we have to be present at those additional programs and offerings. Um, so, I always lose my place here, but, um, so as we keep planning, um, you know, it's kind of with the addition of parks and the focus to kind of going more outdoors because of COVID, um, we're trying to figure out ways to, to keep people outside. And that comes maintenance, and that comes, you know, trying to figure out how to get our trails cleaned up, and, and how we're gonna get Marston to be usable, and that has taken a lot of my time in the last year, um, which is exciting and awesome. But that leaves a lot of pressure on poor Bridget to kind of keep those programs afloat. And I do my best to stay, to stay in there and involved, and sometimes we have to depart ways so that we can cover everything that we got going on. Um, so with this addition of the new program, or the new person, we're hoping that this person could be a focus or be a point of contact for our legacy leader programming. Um, we hope that we can use this person to kind of help with low-key maintenance type responsibilities. That includes things at the town beach, breaking, keeping that up to date. Um, we are still trying to find lifecards right now for this season, um, not easy. So, um, we don't have a person, we don't have personnel down there all the time to keep that beach maintained. And luckily, Highway has helped us, and we've had some volunteers help us with that. But it's really important that we kind of have an extra body to help us with those day-to-day tasks. Um, so, uh, that includes also if, if trash can't be taken out and stuff like that on these fields down here, but especially at the town beach, and we'll have to have barrels over at Marston when that kind of becomes of, of use. Um, we're also, a target reach that we've gotten a lot of calls over the last year is that pre-teenage, the sixth and seventh graders, that are almost, they're looking for things to do as well. So we're hoping with the addition of this person, that person, while we have summer camps and things going on, that takes Bridget's time away, um, that person can kind of focus more on those teen programs. We, and, we did CIT this past year when we had some free time, and it was a huge hit. We had twelve kids who are ready to work now, and they're all twelve, and we can't hire them yet. Um, so to have some programs to keep them still kids is, is what we're trying to aim for. Um, we also introduced dodgeball, and they loved that, too. So that's something we wanna, we wanna roll out in this coming year, and keep them having fun.
I didn't, I didn't think you could do that anymore.
Yeah, I didn't think so either.
Hey, they signed up for it, so they were.
How many dodgeball games have you guys come up with?
Oh, probably over a dozen, different modifications.
How about the adults, I mean, how, when can we get some?
They got pickleball, we can go play.
And we did it outside, too.
Yeah.
But, but with the additional field space, you know, we, we, so we put out a tiny survey, and we ended up getting sixty, you know, responses, and most of those responses were from adults and those teenage kids. Um, so, that adult part was great, because we had a lot of people reach out and say they want, yeah, I'd do an adult full-ball league or adult kickball league or something like that, so why not try? Um, so that's kind of where we're looking to, to be. So we're looking at, um, hopefully adding a full-time position, starting at fifteen dollars with benefits. Um, this person right now would fully be covered out of our RecRe evolving fund, and I attached, um, in the email, a budget breakdown of summer camp and aftercare, so you guys could kind of see. Um, something to note, right now, we, we just released our first day of camp sign-ups, and we projected ten kids at full-time, we're kind of doing it in waves so that we kind of touch on those families who need that care the most. And then, and I think four days or something.
Mondays, part-time.
It'll open that, that part-time, um, wave of families who need it, week to week, stuff like that. So we actually are above ten, we're at fifteen already, so we're super excited about that. Um, we're hoping to have over a hundred kids. So, with those budgets, you'll see that they're a little complicated, there's a lot to them, but, um, there is some room, even including the, the benefit package and everything else. I've also attached a possible, uh, job description for you guys. And then there's also an Excel document that kind of lays out what we did in twenty nineteen, carried on to twenty twenty, uh, and this year, and kind of what we do during the year and when that planning process starts. I think a lot of people don't realize our events take a lot of prep and a lot of time. So we try to plan everything two seasons ahead of time, so that people have enough time to get it on their calendars, all that stuff. Marketing takes up a huge chunk of time. This person would also be taking on some marketing roles and helping us kind of unroll those new programs, also staying up to date uh, with everything we got going on and helping us out. Be nice to have a, a third person. Um, events, when we have a hundred people, are hard for just two of us to kind of maintain, especially in a parade, when half the parade's down that way, and trying to coordinate all of that. It's a very small parade, you know that, but it's hard to be two places at once. Um, so, so happy to answer any questions.
Where are you gonna put him or her?
We have room.
You do?
In the office, yes, we have one more plug available. Um, we have a third laptop that they can use.
Really physically in there, there's enough space for a third person?
It'll be tight, it'll be tight, but we.
I definitely think you need the third person.
Yes.
I'm just asking for.
Yeah.
Future growth of your department.
Yeah, it's good, it's, it's gonna get smaller.
I've seen inside your place, it's, it's quite a bit of stuff in there.
There's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah. It's just sort of be nice, yeah.
We're used to housing some interns, so we have a little desk available right now that we would make more homey if we got a third person, but I appreciate you thinking it's the future like that as well.
We also have two interns locked in for the summer, too, so, surprise.
They're learning how to do with less stuff.
We do that pretty well.
Well, I mean, this building here is outgrowing itself.
Yeah.
Already, especially if there's, not to take her off your subject, and I don't mean to take her off, but if we have an addition of an SAU in this building, there's gonna be real tight, everything's gonna be super tight. And that's not for your, that's for our, our problem, but, you know, I wanna make sure that you and whoever you bring in has a decent facility to work under, and that's, you know, you're not cramming them in the little closet that's next door with a hole in the wall, trying to talk to them and stuff, you know, it's not the ideal work environment for somebody.
You also have an extra desk in, in your, in the.
I get, I get more room in my office than I need.
Well, yeah, there's the desk next to Kelly that's not being used.
Oh, yeah, we have, yes, we have a.
So you could leverage that.
Chris, we'd wanna put you in the front line of people walking in.
Yeah, right off.
I wasn't offering to sit in the fishbowl with them. When, uh, when do you need an answer by?
We would love one as soon as possible. Um, I know that this, this may take some time for you guys to think about, but we are, with, with us moving summer camp to the school and trying to have her play this like half and half, and, you know, where a lot of this is coming from, too, is that we don't really have the depth, and if one of us goes, you know, goes out, which we learned, you know, it happens. Um, but if one of us goes out, that, that adds a whole nother, it just would be nice to not have to stress about it. And so, but the way we've structured it, which has been fantastic, but we have summer camp going on at the school, and then alongside that, we have actually, we're utilizing this space here for those additional summer camps, too. So like specialty camps, we've worked with, you know, the stables, and that's over at the stables, but we'll have soccer camps here, we'll have sport camp, sport camp's new this year, um, that's through us, too, which is pretty cool. Um, so it's hard to be at three places at once, and again, we'd like to utilize the town beach if we can. There's some pretty cool opportunities to, to have a person be able to be down at the beach. We have, just for instance, we have a connection right now with a paddle boarding company who travels, so we'd love to do a teen program where they get dropped off for three hours at the beach, and they learn how to paddleboard, and we don't really need to staff it, but for safety reasons and communication reasons and the public interfering reasons, we'd love to have that person kind of be that point person.
That's a great idea for teens.
Yeah.
That is a great idea.
Yeah.
But you might wanna contact the lake host programs for those paddleboards and people accessing that land.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause you.
And not being, if it's your own private boards that are there all the time, that are never going anywhere, that might be a different story, but.
Yeah, but that's a good idea.
If people are going to see those.
Yep.
And think they can now access their own from that property as a boat launch, that would be something that's, uh.
That's a, that's a fair point.
That's gonna be, that might become an issue.
Yep.
But you would also want to train the person who's down there as a lake host.
Yep.
He's enough. Hey Courtney, did you say that, um, so RecRe evolving fund can cover the position? Does that include, you know, insurance and everything, benefits as well?
Yep.
Okay.
So there's no additional cost to the town?
None. And that's just with those two programs, this person would be running additional programs that also generate some form of income. It's not as bulky as these programs, but it's another source of revenue that we're getting, like vacation camp, stays at the rec. Um, and that will all pick back up better next year. This year, we're still working on, you know, we had eight, we had just had in-person April vacation, we had eighteen kids, which was awesome. Um, but next year, we're hoping to be back to that thirty kid limit, um, so, yeah.
I would support this now.
Me, too.
I'll make a motion, we approve Courtney's request to hire an additional staff for the rec department.
Second.
And a motion and second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have it.
This is amazing.
Yes.
You guys, you guys are doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
You deserve, so good luck.
Yeah.
Hope you find some good candidates.
Yes.
It's getting tough these days.
What's, what's the age requirement for your summer counselors?
Fourteen.
Well, okay, so, six, and it, it's not too late to get you.
No.
I have teenagers, and I want them out of the house this summer.
They're still looking, right?
Yes, recreation, too.
Okay.
Awesome.
We can, we can arrange for you to pay us and us to pay them.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. I've got one that he actually might wanna be a lake host this year, but the other one, yeah, I'll send them your way.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good things, good things.
She is a gem.
Yep.
Nottingham, I think is very fortunate to have, have her.
Swimming in seven different things at one time right now. Obviously, the, this is the busiest time of year for them, but to do it with the kind of COVID rebound going on, and then Marston all going on at the same time, it's, they're, they're swimming.
But I really like that, I like that their perspective is for every segment of town, every group of individuals, and when you think about like that pre-teen age group, too, it's really important to have. I love the idea of paddleboards.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
What did we jump over? Oh, sale of town property.
Yeah, there isn't a whole lot to do, uh, in that regard. Are you comfortable announcing what you've, what you've accomplished thus far? Uh, you haven't talked about it publicly, right? Um.
Yeah.
It's a good, it's the right time for that.
It is?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that? Or do you want me to do it?
No, I mean, you've been, I think you've been spot on as far as handling that, so, you know, you, uh, have the knowledge there, so I think it better come from you, if the board agrees.
Sure. Alright, so just by way of notifying the public, uh, the board has entered a purchase and sales agreement for the big property on Route Four. Uh, they, uh, made that decision in their last non-public meeting before, a deliberative session, actually. You, you all haven't met since before the deliberative session, so this, this isn't new anymore, but it's, it's new public information. Uh, the, so all three parcels and the lease for the cell tower are all included in the purchase and sales agreement. The purchase and, uh, would, would finalize after a due diligence period, uh, as late as September, but perhaps earlier. We're, we may be drifting earlier. Um, the buyer is Tom Moulton from Hampton. Uh, Tom owns, uh, a manufacturing company, a construction company, and has been involved in another, other developments. Um, the board did have other interest in the property and, and decided to enter into this agreement with this potential buyer. Um, the price is nine hundred thousand. There is a deposit in hand already, and the due diligence work is underway. Um, he's been there with his people, his engineers, he's been onsite on the property already with his engineers, with some prospective tenants that he would, he's looking for, uh, prospective tenants. Obviously, it's a big parcel, he doesn't need it all for his own uses, he's, he's looking to, um, as it's been described to me, it's, it's kind of general commercial industrial use. Uh, I think it's gonna fit within the zoning ordinance, generally speaking. Uh, he's not proposing anything, uh, that would be considered surprising, uh, doesn't have anything firm yet, but, um, uh, those are the, those are the key pieces of the deal. This is just a one step, it's the purchase and sales agreement that'd be a closing, uh, you know, in three or four months. Uh, Mr. Moulton, uh, I've, I've talked with him now once, twice, traded a couple emails with him, helping with that due diligence process. Um, seems like the kind of person that is gonna be a good fit for Nottingham, that's me saying that personally, not.
Everything I've read about him, though, seems that way, too.
Yep, um, uh, he's been open and forthright with me, and we're doing what we can to help him get through what the processes he's gotta get through. Um, uh, he was ju, just the other day named the Holloway Entrepreneur of the Year by UNH. Um, so, respected businessman from Hampton, you know, regional, regionally known, so, uh, I think he's gonna be, uh, good for us to work with. Uh, he, this is one thing that I need you to discuss tonight. Um, he has asked for, uh, your blessing, really, uh, to pre-market the, the property as he's going through this due diligence process, uh, and seek out potential tenants. Uh, he's, he doesn't, he, he knows he's gotta get through a whole land use process when this, when this closes, and, uh, wants to be respectful of, of the town and not offend anybody by going out and saying he's, you know, trying to do things that he doesn't have the permission to do, but, uh, at the same time, this is a complex property, a large-scale project, probably, uh, and he'd like to be able to, uh, discuss it with potential tenants, market it to potential tenants. Uh, that's a, that was a new concept for me, I hadn't, I just don't have any experience with that, that kind of land deal. Um, I ran it by the planning board chairman, he was comfortable with it, and I, I come to you and say, how do you feel about that? Um, is there anything that would give you pause if, if he were to do that? Generally speaking, within the, you know, the parameters of the zoning ordinance, more or less, and everything would be, you know, obviously contingent upon actually closing the sale, you know, we have to be open with everybody about what that is, but.
Doesn't affect us in any way, he does that.
I, I couldn't think of an effect, uh, I mean, if, if this deal doesn't close, um, I, I don't see any negative impacts for a future potential buyer. That was the, the thought process I went through, but I.
I mean, nothing he would tell his potential customers is binding on the town in any way, so.
No, no way, shape, or form.
I, I don't anticipate any risk to us, so.
This is pretty common practice, when you have such a, a big project, that the developer will try to recruit, uh, uh, potential tenants prior. I mean, they do it all the time, not saying it's gonna be retail or anything, but retail places, they're always try to field tenants.
The little, on the left there, and as you're going into Epping, pass the line, they, they finally started, they broke ground on that.
Yeah.
That's what they were trying to do, they were, you know, people said they'd come, and then they wouldn't. Now the building's going up, they're gonna have.
Yeah, so I don't see any risk to the town, and, and I'd be in favor of just letting them showcase it. It's only gonna benefit him and us in the long run, so.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay. Alright, if you, if you would have no objection, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll relay that back to him.
You don't need a motion or anything?
He is, he is very, very conscious of not, you know, he, he, he wanted me to say that he doesn't wanna offend anybody, that's why he's, you know, trying to be.
So you don't need a motion? So you don't need a motion or anything, you're good with it?
No, I think, we're, I don't, if you want to make one, but I think I have your.
Okay.
I have your consensus enough to, um, okay. I don't think there's anything else on that property to discuss at this point, even in non-public, unless you have questions you want to cover in, in non-public.
Nope.
Or anything else you want to say about it as we.
One step closer.
Yes.
Yeah.
One step closer.
Yes.
Yeah, so far, the, the early reports are the due diligence process is going well, and so, no, no, nothing's been identified that looks like it's going to scuttle it at this point.
How about the other properties?
The other properties, uh, we are ready to enter into, uh, a listing agreement on the Smoke Street and the Freeman Hall properties. Uh, I heard back from, I think, most of you on email, I just didn't send those in today, just in case you wanted to discuss or hold back on those at all. You've seen the suggested prices, uh, and the commission on that.
I'm good with that.
If you're all good with that, I'll, I'll move forward on those.
Yeah.
Those will, there, there's nothing left to hold them from going to market now, so those will, those will appear shortly, I would think. And then lastly, uh, since you last met, I believe, since you last met in public, the one seventy R old Turnpike Road parcel, uh, that's, which is across the street from the big one that we just discussed, um, that, uh, sold, that transaction closed, uh, the buyer was Shea Concrete, right next to it essentially, you all knew this, but the public may not have seen that. So that closing went through without, it was a typical, you know, closing headaches, but it was relatively smooth. Right now, we are trying to determine if we, if we took in too much in that sale, we may, we may have to give some back to the prior owner, believe it or not.
Oh, really?
We had a late move on the price of that property, and.
Right, right.
So it looks like we're probably going to have to write somebody a check with some of those proceeds, because we've more than earned back the back taxes, and the penalties, and the fees, and everything we've spent to own it, so.
But the town is made whole.
Completely, yes, uh, along with the penalty, and, um, so what we're doing right now is trying to track down that prior owner by way of LLC and some other nonsense.
Is there a, I don't know the correct term, is there statute of limitations, as far, like, you know, the sale of the property, how long do you look for this person, or is it just sit there until you find it?
We have to go through a good faith effort to find them, uh, and if we, if we fail in that, we can turn it over to the court, the law says we turn it over to the court, let the court try to figure it out, uh, and if that fails, then we'll, it, it will revert back to us, so we're going through the steps of.
It's an interesting process, huh?
Yeah, uh, I actually got a letter back, I thought I'd found the, I thought I'd found the guy in some little retirement community in Florida, and I, but I just got the mail back today, so, wasn't, wasn't having, got, you know, so, that, I'm not trying that hard to find a way to give away the money, but we are.
Drafting, yeah.
Yes, we gotta, we gotta go through.
Do the right thing.
But we're, we're whole, and that money is in the bank, so.
Cool.
Uh, and I think that is it for the sale of property.
You got little drips and drabs across the town, though, that.
Yeah, I, I've looked at all of that, I do this every year, I look at all these things, and there really isn't anything of, of, of value, except maybe to a butter, so we've gone through some exercises with small pieces, and, uh, got, you know, hundred-dollar offers that you've rejected, and, um, there's nothing new like that, um, so I don't think there's anything viable left.
Okay.
Without us going out on a limb and, you know, doing some survey work, or spending some legal money to try and figure out a couple parcels, there's, there's not much left to.
Okay.
We're, we're not sitting on, on much that we don't need.
Fair enough. All right, anything else for public? No?
Did you want to do that, uh, abatement request in non-public tonight?
Yes.
Yep.
That would be C.
C. Make a motion that we go into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three-two-C.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Roll call.
Yep.